Everybody and welcome to the November 1st regular meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board. We are going to start tonight with a non-public, so can I have a motion? Oops, and I need to say what it's for. Oops, and it's not on the backside of this. Okay. Hold on, I need to find my little cheat sheet that says what the specific reason is. I know it's not on the back of mine.
It's on the blue.
Oh, it's on the blue. I knew it was somewhere, and I have one at the inside. Okay, so this would be... What would this be, Dr. Morris? Would this be this one here? No, it's not negotiations.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. All right, so I'm going to make a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91- A colon 3, number 3, "Discussion of Matters That Are Likely to Adversely Affect the Reputation of a Person Other Than a Member of the School Board." Can I get a second? And that'll be Brian. And then we need to do a roll call vote. You need to state your name and...
Tom Newkirk, yes.
Francis Narros, yes.
Dan Klein, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Matt Bacon, yes.
Heather Smith, yes.
Gianna Jolci, yes.
All right, all in favor? Seven in favor, the student rep is in favor. And we are going straight down to the unanimous consent, which is a motion to affirm the hiring of the Oyster River District Nurse. You have a motion? Brian, a second? Matt? And all in favor? And that's seven in favor, the student rep is in favor. Okay, down to discussion, and that is our budget, our one item for tonight. Yes, oh, sorry, oh, student rep, thank you Heather. And I, I want to hear, Maeve, I specifically requested that this stay on here, so I can attest to that. All right, yes, the student rep update.
All right, perfect. Sports announcements are first because playoff weeks, it's been a big deal. So, girls cross country won the state championship, and they're actually doing their meet of champions this Saturday at Alver High School at 2:30. Girls cr- oh, sorry, girls volleyball, they have their championship noon Saturday at Pinkerton, and they're doing a rematch of last year, it's Cobran and Oyster once again. Football, football has had an undefeated season, nine and oh. It's the first time since 1975. And they have their quarterfinal game November 11th at 1:00 p.m. And Shear has their state championship this Sunday at 1 o'clock at Pinkerton Academy. And then lastly, Unified Soccer is hosting the semifinal match tomorrow at 3:00 p.m. So those are sports. And then for student events, we have Breaking New Grounds fundraiser for the senior class this Friday. 10% of all the proceeds go to our senior class. And then, I know you wanted me to mention the Fall Play. It's the 16th, 17th, and 18th of November at 7 o'clock. And it's arsenic and old lace. I hear there's a fat suit involved, and there was a lot of laughing coming from the room, so it's gonna be a good time. And then I've inherited Noe's list of dates, so in her honor, I will read this list of dates. So, this Friday is the end of the quarter. Teacher Workshop is Tuesday the 7th. And November 8th at 6 o'clock in the auditorium is Sports Info Night. November 9th is Coffee House, 6 to 8 in the NPR. Friday the 10th, we're observing Veterans Day, so there's no school. And then lastly, the 13th is the ASVAB testing, and report cards are coming out.
Thank you, Maeve. All right, and now we will move on to the budget discussion.
So, want me to frame it? Okay. So, the FY '25 budget, the board had a workshop last week, and did not make any decisions because they can't make decisions in a workshop format. For laying the groundwork for where the board is at, there've been a number of budget drivers that, a couple have been unexpected and some were predicted. So, an expected budget driver, of course, is staff increases, and they approach about $1 million. Unexpected was a 15.1% increase in health insurance, which also approaches $1 million. Expected was the last bond payment of the middle school, which is $583,043.37. Unexpected was a $210,000 increase in utilities. That's because our contract for electricity has, will be ending in December at 6 cents, and the new contract is almost double that at 11 cents per kilowatt hour. Under consideration, under the strategic plan, is a increase in the size of the Massway cafeteria. And the draft budget has $500,000 in it to start that process. It would require an additional $500,000 in the FY '26 budget for that project to move forward. Then we started talking about the tutors. We just finished their first collective bargaining agreement. The cost of that will be on a Warren article for the public to consider, that was $155,000. And those were the drivers. And then we had a discussion about the overall budget increase, which was a little bit more than 6.5%, and how the board could adjust that. So, there are a couple of ways the board can adjust the budget, and that is by cutting expenses. And so, in anticipation of the bond payment, the board approved a retirement incentive for staff for this year. And we had 10 teachers and three support staff members participate. We anticipate that that will save the district about $335,000. Another way for the district to decrease the impact of the budget on the taxpayers is to identify revenue. So, the following revenue streams we propose the board to consider as we go through this conversation. We anticipate an increase in Barrington tuition of $68,395. An increase in interest, so for the past five years, interest-bearing accounts have been less than 1%. And with the rise of overall interest across the country, interest-bearing accounts are producing revenue for the first time in a very long time. We are anticipating $25,000 in interest income. The board wisely set aside several funds in my initial years of superintendent. One was a health insurance trust fund that was set up to be used when we faced an extraordinary increase in health insurance. Clearly, that is what we're facing this year. So, we put forward $250,000 in revenue from our insurance trust fund. We also have a trust fund that we've never used in the time I've been here for special education, and that's to cover any extraordinary costs associated with, with special education. We've had some pretty expensive out-of-district placements that would justify us utilizing that account. And then, last, in this current budget, we had predicted using $500,000 from the reserve fund balance. As it turns out, we will not be able to use that. So, we're asking the board to consider using $311,320 of the reserve fund balance, equating new revenue of $904,715. In the conversation we had at, at the budget workshop, Heather rightfully pointed out that another way to adjust the budget is to reallocate funds that currently exist in the budget. And so, that's always a possibility. So, you know, I kind, I've listed four options here. These are not definitive options. You may have option five, six, seven, and eight before the time, you know, we get down to just the first meeting in December, and you have a budget that moves from my table to yours. So, the easiest decision is, is option one, is to cut to $335,000 from the proposed budget. That would take an action of the board. Another option is for you to capture all of the identified revenue of $904,715. That would take an action of the board. You could reduce the increase in the capital improvement budget if you decided not to do air conditioning at the high school with the multipurpose room, or you decided not to expand the size of the cafeteria at Massway. The cafeteria would cut $500,000 from the budget. The air conditioning would cut about $285,000 from the budget. Option four is to, some combination of what I've listed above, or any combination that you can think of. So, in driving this budget, as every budget before it, we've used the strategic plan as the backbone for putting this budget together. Very easy to look at a budget in relation to the numbers before you and try to balance them. That's kind of Budget 101. However, you have a strategic plan that you've been dedicated to and adopted five years ago, and the budget that I presented to you adheres to that plan. Doesn't mean that you can't divert from it, but it does mean that that's the basis of this budget. It also, the budget is about the services we provide to students. So, this is where the budget doesn't become a balancing of numbers. It becomes a, what services do we want for children? What services do we need for children? In the past, one of the decisions the board has made, as an example, coming out of COVID, was to increase the number of tutors in the district, which came under our MTSS plan, which has done, been nothing short of a miracle in terms of helping children become more successful academically. We've also supported an increase in our SEL staff and our mental health staff. The, probably the number one identified issue in relation to our needs and the budget related to children is the support of their mental health needs. In that light, you have a yellow sheet. And all the yellow sheets, by the way, have been updated with cost figures, which is why you got them again tonight, so you could see how much things cost. A mental health behavioral specialist is going to be a pricey position if we can find one. You know, we said, we had this similar conversation when we were looking for a licensed drug and alcohol counselor. Amazingly, Britta appeared, and she became really a unicorn in the world of staffing Lydex. So, we were very fortunate. Maybe we'll repeat that miracle, maybe not. But uniformly across the middle school and high school, what we've seen is a dramatic increase in the number of kids who are expressing mental health issues. And we need a specialist to be able to service those. In a normal world, those services would be available outside the school setting. They are not available outside the school setting. Parents can spend weeks and months trying to get services for children who need support. And so, what you've seen over the years is the school systems across New Hampshire taking more and more responsibility for supporting children outside of our traditional academic pathway. And so, this budget continues to promote that. The yellow sheet that's in front of you, we all believe is critical. I did ask Andrea Von Owen to be here tonight to talk about the music position and to address any issues you had there. There were questions about her assistant teacher that I couldn't answer. You also have staffing levels related to the music program. So, if you don't mind to take advantage of Andrea being here, Denise, can I invite her up and have the board ask any questions they have related to that? Andrea, would you like to take the podium?
Here, everybody.
Can you just do an overview of the program, Andrea?
Sure. The string orchestra program started, this is its 10th year. So, 10 years ago, I was hired to create the program. That didn't exist prior to that. So, our first year, we had, I think, 45 students that were taking beginning string lessons in all four grades at the middle school and a few students at the high school that had already played string instruments outside of school. The need was there because we had so many students that already took string instrument lessons outside of our public schools and wanted an orchestra program during the school day. So, that was what I was hired to do. 10 years later, we, you know, obviously have kind of plateaued in terms of our numbers, which was bound to happen. And kind of give and take, every year, we have between 220 and 240, 250 students involved in the entire program. There is an assistant teacher that teaches with me most days here at the middle school, and just due to how many hours she has, isn't in every single class and isn't often at the high school. We have 60, around 60 to 70 students any given year in the high school as it's plateaued in that one class. And at the middle school, anywhere between usually 140 and 160, 175 here. So, that's where we're at in terms of numbers. The assistant teacher teaches alongside me and takes care of things like instrument repairs, which are very unique to the string instrument world. We, if any of you have seen our concerts, we kind of run around crazy in the beginning. Each group gets on stage to tune the instruments and make sure that they're in working order before we start, because we can't just start by taking the instrument out of its case and playing. Because they're made of mostly organic materials, we also have many repairs that need to happen. I was thinking of this this morning, or this afternoon after my fifth grade class, because it took us just 12 to 15 minutes just to get everything ready for those students because of the kids bumping them and like the bridges out of place and just things that need to be replaced on them. So, that's kind of the overview. Do you have anything else that I'm forgetting?
No, I think that, I wanted to have the overview, but I know that they had some questions from the workshop that only you could answer, so I turned it over to the board to ask Andrea, any questions that you have?
If another strings teacher was hired, what would that enable you to do?
So, if another strings teacher was hired, I would be able to concentrate more on differentiation for our students at the high school. We have a separate orchestra here for every grade level at the middle school, so we really are able to tailor their learning quite a bit to where they're at. At the high school, we have grades nine through 12 in one room at one time. So, you have a ninth grader that maybe has taken lessons with me only, so it's their fifth year playing, up to perhaps a senior who's taken lessons since they were three or four years old in Suzuki. So, there's a really wide range of students that are in that one place, which makes it a little bit more challenging to choose music that's going to challenge those who need challenging and is not going to have the, the students that have just made it through the program itself kind of suffer and have a hard time. So, while we use mentorship and sometimes our assistant teacher, if she has the hours to do so, which oftentimes she doesn't because she's supporting this beginning level of instrument instruction, we're, we're working towards hopefully having multiple groups up there to help with that. I would also say that the grading component of grading 240 students the way we currently grade, which is via competencies and authentically via competencies, is quite a large load for one person. My assistant teacher does not do any of that. She is not a certified teacher. So, she doesn't necessarily do planning for classes. She doesn't do grading, she doesn't do correspondence with parents and families. So, that is all falling on me right now. Yes?
So, and I totally hear the need, but if we were not able to hire another full-time strings teacher, would it be helpful to have a second assistant at all? That was one of the questions that I had.
Sure, anything is helpful. The assistants don't take off the workload of the things that I just described before, if I was going to be honest. That's what's getting quite heavy right now. I think the assistant is absolutely essential in the day-to-day classroom, like present moment, things that occur. And, but the grading and that, those pieces of it, that we feel very strongly about providing for our families and for our students, that wouldn't necessarily be lessened.
So, in an ideal world, you'd be looking at two teachers and an assistant? Or would making the assistant a full-time teacher cover what, what you're looking for?
In an ideal world, the first thing that you mentioned would be where we were at. If we made, if we took the assistant away and had another full-time teacher, that would take away the present, so it's like the opposite of what you were just talking about, Denise. It would take away the ability for that present moment help to be there in the classroom where, and I do not have her all the time. Again, she only has a certain number of hours. And I do find that when I don't have her, and I have issues come up, which is very often with young students transporting things back and forth, that it, it takes up a huge chunk of my class time to get those instruments ready, because I have to literally, for the younger ones, handle every single one of those to make sure that they're all set to go. So, yeah, it's that balance of having both of those things.
Another question I have is, I don't, do you, do you think, and you may not have an answer for this, but if we were able to hire a half-time teacher, would there be, do you think we'd have any luck finding someone that might be interested? Again, I'm just trying to figure out a way to maybe get extra support where we might not be able to fund, you know, a full-time second teacher.
Sure, I'm, I'm gonna put a different hat on right now, if that's okay. I'm the president of the New Hampshire Music Educators Association right now. And what I'm being, my, people around the state are telling me is that there are so many open music teacher positions right now that aren't being filled, and a number of them are string teachers, to be honest. So, and those are full-time with benefits, salaried positions. So, just using that information that I have, half-time is just not necessarily as attractive, obviously, to people. You all know, there's nothing that you don't already know. So, I'm not sure the answer to that, but I would say that that information does inform me in that way, makes me think that perhaps it would be more difficult to find somebody. I don't know for sure, obviously, yeah.
If we hired a second teacher, how would the orchestra teaching be split? Do you have an idea of how you'd want to do that?
Sure. So, I think that obviously it would have to be a global discussion with all the administrators from both school districts that we, or school district schools that we have strings in. And kind of globally, music department-wide too, just to, to make sure all the voices were heard and all the programs were taken into consideration, of course. But what I think might be a tentative idea would be that the new person would handle the younger grades so that it would be consistent for those students for however many years and however that fits into the schedule. And then I would perhaps bridge the gap between the middle school and the high school and still teach perhaps an upper grade class in the middle school, and then be able to do that differentiation in the high school and do more for the students up there. That's very vague, I realize, but yeah.
So, I guess my question that's, wouldn't be really directed at you, Andrea, but would be, I've got kids in orchestra, I kind of know how that one works, but I'd want kind of a comparison to band and chorus of, how many teachers do we have for that? And how are they split? Just as a comparison of how we're managing this.
So, we have one chorus teacher. She's largely here in the middle school. She's been trying to expand the program into the high school. And we have three band teachers, if you will. Two of them are here and one at the high school. Workflow is very different between when you have three teachers versus one teacher. And so, anything else I can answer on that? Gianna?
I think it'd just be a number comparison, but I'm assuming if you've got three teachers, that I'm assuming the number of band students must be higher, though I know that the messing around with wooden instruments takes more time than messing with a brass one.
Yeah. So, the numbers in the middle school and all programs are very high. The numbers in the high school are not very high. So, part of the conversation that I've started with the music department, and I say started, I mean like just barely started, is should we succeed in getting a second strings person? I think that we need to look at how staff are distributed in the entire program, not just strings. So, there's a real inequity in distribution of band students between the middle school and high school that would need to be addressed in the coming school year. And that goes back to what Andrea was saying about having a collective conversation about how we do that work. And without this position, it doesn't make any sense to have that conversation. With this position, we can have that conversation. And so, that's another issue. That's not the primary issue, that's the secondary issue. The primary issue is actually workload on Andrea, which she has not addressed. She's talked about these students. I want to take a moment to talk about Andrea, because she won't talk about herself. This is exhausting workload for any teacher to have. If you look at the distribution of students across the district, there's no one who has the number of students that she has with the num, with the amount of complexity that she's trying to serve with the children. Strings instruments, as you know, Gianna, because your child is doing it, are dramatically different in the sense that in this room, designed for music, she could have a violin player on one side of the room and a violin player on the other side of the room, and she'll be running over to the other side of the room to make sure that instrument is tuned properly, because the environment is just that different. That happens across all the strings instruments. And then we're asking Andrea, and she's been doing it faithfully for 10 years, to go up and down, co-drive, and fit into two different master schedules, which has also been a limiting factor related to the high school, because there's only one slot that we can fit her in where she's in sync with the middle school. So, a second person would free up the opportunity for another opportunity in the master schedule at, at the high school. So, I'm putting that out there because Andrea's an ultimate professional. She's not going to put that out there, but we, we do have a workload issue related to having one person do the entire strings program, 5 through 12.
Thank you. I think, just given the timeframe, maybe one more question, because we probably have other things in the budget we need to talk about.
I just want to get clear, the, you went over fairly quickly the number. The num, how many students do you have in middle school and high school in the strings program?
Right now, currently. Yep, I have about 160 here, 150, 160 here, and then 60.
So, 220.
Yep.
Thank you, Andrea, appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
The other person that we haven't had a chance to speak to about her budget is Meredith. Meredith, if you could come forward. Meredith is our new food service director. You haven't seen her much this fall because of staffing shortages. She's literally been the chef and the cook and the cashier and has jumped into the deep end of the pool in relation to our program. So, Meredith, I'd just like to take a moment to introduce yourself.
Sure, sure. Good evening, my name is Meredith St. Ange. It's a pleasure to be here and finally meeting everyone tonight. A little bit of background of myself. I'm originally from Pennsylvania. I have a degree in hotel, restaurant, and institutional management from Penn State. Started my career in restaurants. Moved up here in '07 and worked at UNH for 12 years. Ran two of the three dining halls there. And then the last four years, I was at Deerfield, K through 8 food service manager there.
So, Meredith, in your budget, there's a dramatic increase in food costs. Can you address that?
Sure. Well, I think you all have seen it over the past couple of years. With post-pandemic, the supply chain issues, you grocery shopping for yourself, the increase is dramatic. I know the other day, I was watching Good Morning America, and they were saying something along the lines of just the Thanksgiving meal prep from this year to last year is up almost $2.50. So, therefore, our, our, you know, our, our products are still slightly unavailable and increased from the big, even from the big vendors, even though, you know, they say the more you buy, the better price point you get. It's still, it's still expensive dramatically.
Can you speak about the numbers in the schools this year? Number of, number of meals you're serving, is it up, is it level, is it down?
Well, I'm not exactly sure, but I, I feel as though in looking at the sales from last year into this year, the participation has increased. It certainly has increased in the last, you know, we're in school, what, three months? It's certainly increased from September. Our numbers in October have, have certainly gone up as, as well as staff meals, which is wonderful.
So, one of the things I said during the budget workshop, Meredith, is that a $300,000 increase in food is not, you're not likely to get the revenue to offset that increase. Do you agree with that?
I do. You know, we, the only revenue stream that we do get are a lot of our à la carte sales, as well as our, you know, our parents that pay for their child's lunches or breakfasts. However, keep in mind that I cannot refuse breakfast or lunch to any student regardless of funds. So, that does continue to happen, not often. So, therefore, that's a negative balance there.
Do you continue to, in the past, we've had a small number of parents who couldn't balance their accounts. Is that still the case?
I'm still, yes, I get a report every Monday on negative balances. I try to do my best to reach out and, you know, to offer any assistance that we could get, that we could give them. But there, right now, I believe it looked in about $800 in the negative for everyone right now.
So, that's not terrible considering the size of the program.
Right.
And you are continuing to buy food fresh, vegetables and beans?
Yep, yep, I'm continuing with the program that Doris has. I'm continuing with the program that Doris has so wonderfully done. Local apples from someone in Maine, Guiles, local grass-fed beef from three different companies. This, we already did a second run of purchasing, as well as our bulk milk here in the middle school and in the high school.
And so the food, the fresh farm food was a result of a petitioned warrant in the second year of my tenure, where it was presented by the community, and we've continued to invest in farm-fresh products since.
I actually just went to a meeting not that long ago with the woman from UNH Cooperative, and we're looking as a group to get more farmers out there and reaching out possibly more products such as eggs and some cheeses and possibly some fish. It's, I know the fish angle is a little hard for school food, but we're certainly looking to see what's available.
Board questions for Meredith? Meredith, welcome to the district.
Well, thank you, welcome, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, thanks.
David and Misty, would you mind coming up and talking about the para-educator position? So the yellow sheets on the para-educators that David and Misty have proposed have been updated with costs, and I just wanted to make sure they touch base one more time about it since we're in a public meeting.
Good evening.
Hello, everyone. I guess I just want to note that the yellow sheet from last week was updated, Brian. The number has been included in there, I apologize for that. Otherwise, this is a position that David and I honestly have talked about for a couple of years. We have found ways to try to meet student needs internally, the best we can, with some of the hourly staff that we have that may have any time in their day to support students who might need a check-in or checkout, and attention, where you observe in the classroom and collect data on time, on task, and that nature, all to support the work.
Thank you. This is all to support the work that our school counselors and our school psychologists directly oversee and support. So this would be a position to continue that work at a higher level for the students who require more behavioral health services through MTSS.
Really, the, one of the last pieces to the MTSSB portion of our strategic plan, where we've created the system that our schools use to talk about students and to determine who has need and then how to implement that need. We have, you know, many students working with our counselor and our school psychologist, they're also pushing into classrooms to support work, and then we have students, many of whom are non-identified, who have these multiple day, multiple needs throughout the day, where a little check-in, a walk to an area to do some regulation work, a break, things like that, is built into their day to really help them be academically and socially successful. And as Misty says, right now, we're doing that, other people are doing that throughout the day, instead of doing, you know, other work, and this para-educator managed by our counselor and school site could really do a lot of that work throughout the day and help make that a much smoother process.
Thank you, guys. Becca, would you like to do the update on the cost of the registrar and its need? So in the registrar document, you'll see that I calculated two different ways of approaching the position. One is a calendar year position, and the other is a school year position. That's kind of approaching it from the direction of Denise's questions about, could we do this for less money? So Becca's recommendation is it be a school year position, but I wanted to, I mean, a calendar year position, but I wanted you to see it as a school year position as well.
So the difference for that would be, the school year would be $68,183.90, and year round would be, excuse me, $81,928.25.
And as you see staffing positions, Amy and I have determined, just for our budgetary use, a two-person health insurance plan, which is about $27,000.
Is that included in the numbers on the sheets here?
Should be.
Okay.
Amy, the health insurance and FICAR, are those included in the yellow sheets? Yes.
Thank you. It includes retirement as well, ma'am.
It includes retirement in the cost, okay.
So we're trying to give you an accurate indication of the total cost of a position. When you see us give you a range, like for the behavioral mental health specialist, we went high, because that likely is going to be an expensive position. So we tried to make the best guess of what's realistic. And the need, Becca, the reason I'm doing this is because the public hasn't heard these, and so if you just would go over the need?
For the registrar?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have one person right now who's acting as both the counseling secretary and the registrar, and that registrar job has just gotten so big that really has become a job for itself. There's a lot of state data entry that goes with that, transcripts, the number of students that we have has grown over 200 in the past about seven years. We now have more CTE classes, BLAX classes, ELOs, all of those have to be hand-added to transcripts. So those are all just pieces of this job that have grown that weren't really there before.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
I do have a clarification question, not about the position, just in general. So with the, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So for example, with the 6.29% increase, that was without the increased revenues, is that correct? Like, that didn't take, so that's what it would be without tapping into those increased revenues? Am I, I'm just trying to clarify, like, what, you know, because we're talking about, you know, if we do these increased revenues of the, using the various funds and the retirement incentive, but the actual proposed budget, like, with, you gave us the various scenarios, the 6.29, the 4%, et cetera, that's not counting the revenue, the additional revenue?
If you're looking at the colored sheets?
Yes.
Yeah, so if you're looking at what the tax impact would be, that's taking into consideration the additional revenue.
All right, but as far as the increase, the increase is strictly on the expenditure?
Expense size, yes.
Okay, all right. So just, so in my thinking then, is that while it would be a 6% increase, if we tapped into the revenues, it would be more like a 4%?
Yeah.
Okay, I just, just to clarify that. And then, yeah, I know. And then the other thing that I just wanted to throw out there tonight, because I know we're getting short on time, is, and I'm not sure this went out to everyone, but the NESDEC long-range planning shows 19 more births in 2019 compared to 2018. If those 19 births turned into 19 more kindergarten students, we could potentially be looking at needing an additional kindergarten teacher next year as well. So I just wanted to throw it out there, because we haven't talked about that.
So I just wanted to bring the board back up to speed in front of the camera, so that the community had the same information in a much more abridged version than you did. The community needs to know you've already spent four hours talking about and getting presentations from the administrators that talked tonight. I didn't have Bill come up, because I'm cognizant of time, but we can bring Bill up at the next budget conversation. Not that he's not important, but I know you've got to get to the next part of your evening. And so again, if you have questions related to the budget, send them to me, and Amy and Suzanne and I will sit down and generate whatever information you need. If you think of something that you want more related to the music program or, you know, the behavioral mental health specialist, please, you know, ask your questions, because in the end, you're all going to be making the decision. This budget exists, is the superintendent's budget, it has to become your budget by the first meeting of December, so we have a very short window. That window is actually dictated by the fact that we're in SB2 town, so we can have our warrant article, our deliberative session, our public hearing, and our warrant articles all fall really fast in the new year, and it seems like we have a lot of time, but the reality is, we have until the first meeting of December. So we're going to be making a lot of decisions. Right now, again, we're flying blind in terms of revenues. We will know the revenues on the 15th or 16th. That will help make better decisions on your part. So what you're looking at is strictly an expenditure side of the equation at this point. The revenues will help you finalize your thoughts related to what you feel like you are willing to adopt and send to the voters.
All right, and thank you, Dr. Moore. So with that, I think that we will simply, first of all, check if there's any public comments before we close out our meeting. Thank you. No public comments, so closing actions. Then our next meeting will be November 15th, where I imagine that we'll be spending considerable time talking about all these different options for the budget, and we will not have our non-public for tonight. We will have to do that also on the 15th. With that, could I entertain a motion to adjourn? Brian, second, Heather, all in favor? Seven in favor, the student rep is in favor, we are adjourned.